Am I ready?
I think that's what they told me.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the June 15, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I would request that everyone please turn off or mute all cell phones and other electronic devices. Also at this time, I would invite everyone to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Applications for rezoning requests will be heard during tonight's meeting, and the commission will vote on these applications and make a recommendation to the county council. The applications will then be scheduled to be introduced before the county council at the Monday, July 11, 2022 County Council meeting. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for this evening's public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those documents are the Unified Development Orders of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2030 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2030 Future Land Use Plan map. I see that we have a quorum. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our meeting is open. A little information on how we operate our meetings. I will read into the record the application to be considered. We will ask the staff for their report. Commissioners may or may not have questions for staff at that time. Then we'll ask the applicant to come forward to present their application and answer any questions that commissioners may have. Then we will have a public hearing. At that time, anyone wishing to speak regarding the application can come forward. If you're going to speak, please fill out one of these cards. They're right over here on the table. This way, we ensure that we get your name, address, et cetera, correct in our minutes. If you do come forward to speak, this is a hearing of record, so I'll have to swear you in. Once we close the public hearing, we will take no more comments from the audience. Depending on the issues that may came up in the public hearing, we'll ask the applicant to come back, answer any questions that the commission may have, and then we will proceed to vote. Okay? Our vote tonight is just a recommendation to the county council, and as I stated, this will be on their agenda for Monday, July 11, 2022, regardless of our decision. So, okay. First item on our agenda is RZ 22-11. The owner is William P. Wazaluski, hope I got that right, and Melanie N. Wazaluski, revocable trust. The applicant is Darrell and Jennifer Kohler. The requested action is a request to amend the zoning map from agricultural district, five acre minimum lot size, with floodway fringe overlay district to RR Single Family Residential District, three acre minimum lot size, with floodway fringe overlay district. The location is located on the east side of Ferris County Road, approximately 2,900 feet north of Highway 61, adjacent to Town Park and near the city of Flint Hill. The rezoning area consists of 61.35 acres. Staff.
As mentioned, this property, the subject property includes about 61 acres, zone agricultural. The proposal is for RR Single Family Residential zoning with three acre minimum lot size. So, the difference is essentially going from five acres lot size minimum to three acre lot size minimum. The difference between the agricultural zoning district and the RR, there are a few differences. First, you can do agricultural uses in the agricultural district, but you can't within cannot within the RR district. So, you'd be giving up on the ability to have agricultural uses, except for uses like agricultural uses accessory to a single family residence, like a garden, for instance. Also, in the RR district, the primary purpose of that district is for single family residences. There's a developmental difference as well. In the agricultural zoning district with five acre minimum lots, applicants can develop under what's called a minor subdivision plat. Those have different standards in that there's no paved roads required. In fact, there's a road itself is not required. You can have even a driveway within serving parcels off of a driveway, as long as you have an easement that serves all the parcels. Whereas in RR district, you have to build a paved street to public street standards, and it's a higher level of service, you might say, in the RR district than in the agricultural zoning district. In part, that reflects the different expectations that people have living in a rural area versus a suburban area, or in areas on the edges of the suburbs like this. The master plan recommends, the 2030 master plan, the future land use map recommends future land use for low density residential uses, one to four dwellings per acre. The lack of sanitary sewer, though, does not support that density of dwellings. Instead, it would support three acres or larger, because, again, there is no public sewer service available to this property. I would note that the 61 acres is on Ferris Road at the, right at the end of the public street, where the public street ends and where this private drive starts, or private road starts. Ferris Road, it goes south and connects with Highway 61. At Highway 61, currently, there is a crossover to North Point Prairie Road, currently. The long range plans are for that crossover to go away, and instead, a north service road and a south service road would be built along Highway 61. And so, Ferris Road would terminate at this north, what we'll call the north service road for Highway 61. That's during the long-term plans. If anyone wants to see those plans, I have a plan with me if you want to look at it. The other thing I would note is that St. Charles County has a park that borders this property to the south, Town Park. As part of our notification process, we specifically let the Parks Director know that this application has come forward, just as a courtesy to let them know in case they had any comment. We did not receive any comments from the Parks Department about this. The Planning and Zoning Division recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this application as consistent with the 2030 Future Land Use Plan.
Any questions for staff? Harry Nill, we'll ask the applicant to come forward.
I'm Darrell Kaler, and this is my surveyor.
Please raise your right hand. Are you going to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll swear you both at the same time. You solemnly swear our firmness to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings, and in the pains and penalties of perjury.
Yes, sir.
Please state your names and addresses for the record.
Darrell Kaler, 1932 Old Eyes and Bath Lane, Forestdale, Missouri.
Shane Walterman, Landmark Surveying, 802 East Main, Onesville, Missouri.
Okay. Go ahead, Darrell.
Yes. I am looking to purchase this piece of property to turn it into three acre lots, to build asphalt road in there and sell the lots off it, is what my application's for, not to live there. So, I don't know if there are any other questions you needed from me, but...
Any questions for the applicant?
What are you going to do with the existing buildings that are on there?
Right now, we are thinking about leaving that on a three acre lot and then attaching it to the new asphalt road and eliminating the side road there, making it all part of a, that would be sold on a three acre lot or three and a half acre lot, depending on what the lot sizes are.
Okay. Are there any public utilities there other than Black Creek?
No. Nope. There'll be sewer, or, I'm sorry, septic's and sewer, each well, each house would have a well, each lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We will now open the public hearing for RZ 22-11. This is a rezoning request located at 2200 Ferris County Road. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this application? Come forward one at a time. You solemnly swear our firmness to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings, and in the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Tony Hackenworth, 2143 Ferris County Road, Forestdale, Missouri.
Okay. Go ahead, Tony.
We live at the end of the road, on the opposite side of the Ferris County Road, in the west end, across from Wazalewski property, the property we're talking about. My biggest concern, or our biggest concern as a family with three little girls, is the intersection on the highway. It's treacherous the way it is, and that's what not a big, you know, we don't have a lot of houses on the road, so it's very limited traffic on our side. It's the congestion at 61, and it's only going to get worse. I'm not against them developing that property whatsoever. I anticipate that happening. I'm requesting a state of five acres minimum to reduce that density, to keep that traffic down, so we have less incidents at Point Prairie, Highway 61. There's nowhere to go. It's the congestion from Point Prairie, and increasing highway traffic, of course, going north and south, because so many people are traveling, but the Point Prairie homes on that side, plus the high school and the middle school over there, it just increases even worse. So, we've pretty much given up crossing the highway at this point and go up to Highway U on Highway 61 to turn around to come back south. Same thing when we're coming south. We've got to go to Highway P and turn around and come back, because it's too dangerous with our kids. And my oldest daughter's 14 years old, and I've got a 12-year-old and a six-year-old. And my wife swears she's going to kill me if my daughters die crossing this highway. So, our hopes that something would happen. So, my recommendation is to stay at least, I don't have any problem with them developing it, but a minimum of five acres, keep that density down until the road infrastructure is there. And that would be a decision to the property owner, do I want to develop this now and recoup money at five acres, or maybe get a bigger return, waiting until the roads are improved, and that plan actually goes into place with the service roads and the overpass and Highway W.
Anything else?
Nope. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I had one question. How many acres is your house on?
Twenty and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay. We'll get a chance to do that later. Anyone else wishing to speak? You solemnly swear our firmness to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings, and in the pains and penalties of perjury.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Jared Heacock, 2097 Ferris County Road, Forestdale, Missouri.
Go ahead, sir.
Basically, exactly what he said. We've got five, maybe six houses on this one street at the current time. 61's a nightmare. I have an eight-year-old son, and if that road doesn't fix by then, I'm going to move, just for some fact, crossing that street now is too dangerous. So, to bring in another 12 to 18 houses is insane, in my opinion, how we're going to travel and just live in general. Like he said, I'm not opposed to redeveloping the property, but, you know, safety should be a concern. That's really it. And he knows basically everything, and what he said, I agree 100% with.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
I would like a copy of that, too, from you, before we take off.
You solemnly swear our firmness to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings, and in the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sean McLaughlin, and I live at 2137 Ferris County Road.
Go ahead, Sean.
Pretty much the same thing that they said. It's this, I mean, there's times you'll sit out there for five minutes, just waiting to actually pull on to the highway, and then you're stuck out in the middle, waiting to even get back out there. I as well have three daughters. It's dangerous. It's scary trying to get out there and add in more homes. It's going to be a huge safety concern. Am I able to ask him something?
Just know, you have to ask us.
How long has this plan for the outer roads been in effect? Like, I know he mentioned that there's a plan for the outer road. How long has that been there?
We'll ask staff about that.
Okay. Well, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? You solemnly swear our firmness to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings, and in the pains and penalties of perjury.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Marty Kernsner. Address is 2780 Carter Road, Moscow Mills.
Go ahead, sir.
And my father couldn't make it here tonight, and we own the property that is adjacent to this one here. And our concerns are the amount of water that's going to be coming off of this property onto our farm, which overflows into Big Creek, which is already having an extraordinary amount of water coming from it, from all the building going on everywhere. Sorry about that little voice here.
Okay.
And which is causing flooding down in our bottoms and all the other farm and properties down from there. So, it's my concern, and I understand what they're saying, too, about the amount of traffic and everything up there, and I agree with a lot of that, too. But my concerns is the amount of water and overflow that's going to be coming through our property.
Okay. Where is your, in conjunction with the property?
It's Kernsner, Henry Kernsner Farm. We bought the property on the backside, down into the bottoms.
Okay. How much does he have back there?
There is 135.
Okay.
I believe, right there.
Okay.
Or 35 acres. I think there's 35 acres on that side. I'm sorry.
Okay. And you guys farm that, or?
Yes.
Can you bring that up? Can they bring that map up? Some of the maps in the back. There's a section with the subject property with trees and all that, right, that one right there.
Do you like me to show you? Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, it goes Ferris Road, to your left.
On the left. So, you've got to be up there in the corner, then?
Probably at the top there.
Okay.
All the water comes off of this.
Right.
So, you go through our farm there, and other branches that comes off right here, where all the water comes into, which is right, you see where the little creek?
Yeah. I see the creek.
Mr. Chairman, we don't want to say that we can't.
Okay. You need to take a microphone with you, sorry.
I'm sorry. I should have, I forgot.
If you look up top, all the water from this property is going to come to that point there. And if you look up at the very top, where you see a little U shape, that is where Big Creek is. So, all the other water will come to that spot and go straight to there, which connects into our property and all the other properties on Big Creek that gets flooded all the time. So, our concern, and a lot of the properties down there, which everybody knows about this, and I came up and talked about it, is that all the water is going to come through us to get to the creek.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding application RZ 22-11? You solemnly swear our firmness to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings, and in the pains and penalties of perjury.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Arnie C. A.C. Dinoff, county public advocate, mailing address, P.O. Box 1535, O'Fallon, 63366. My testimony is as follows. This is a perfect area for this type of residential development. It's ripe and primed for this usage. Three acres in this land area is perfect. As you all know and all recall, we all went through a lot of time, energy, and effort into planning our 2030 Land Use Comprehensive Plan. Because of the lack of sewer treatment, the Colossus area to the south would be the city of Onesville, which, of course, they're growing and eventually will be able to service this with sewage treatment. The current property is currently allowed at five acre tracts, according to our zoning map. The master plan calls for one to four homes per acre, and so, this is a great compromise on behalf of the applicant. It's because of the pending availability of sewer service, and therefore, they have to revert to the county regulations for septic system for each home. At five acres, this would yield 12 homes. At three acres, it would be possible, depending on their layout, from 16 to 18 homes. So, we're not talking about a huge difference here. This is, in my opinion, responsible growth. It's a low density, and it's really not going to affect our county or the area. Now, we all do know, and I agree with the speakers before me, MoDOT and the County Road Board really need to step up to the plate. It's been going on for years, where people have been losing their life and have been maimed or injured for the rest of their life. We need to upgrade 61, we need to upgrade that roadway ASAP. We need to put in the money and the road improvements, the lighting, the guardrails, and cut out the crossovers and make it a real interstate-type situation. Now, there is great news that has come on the horizon. In the past week, two weeks, federal and state funding, MoDOT has announced for St. Charles County $191 million worth of funding. Of that funding will be in the 2023 to the 2027, known as the STIP Plan. It will put significant, and I, to my understanding, it's going to be 30 to 40 to 50 million dollars of that $191 million stipend from Route, from Missouri Route P to the Lincoln County line, in putting in these safety improvements that are much needed. This will be a significant safety improvement from what we see today, and will result in the saving of lives and injuries. In my opinion, this application is a reasonable request. It falls within the guidelines and the recommendation of the County 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We need to grow our county at a reasonable and responsible rate, and I believe this is responsible. State law, under Chapter 89 of the State Statutes of Missouri, you really can't regulate, to some degree, of how a proper property owner decides how to develop their property if it's reasonable and responsible growth. For those reasons, I'm asking commissioners to recommend to the county council unanimous approval. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Dinoff? Arnie, you brought home two winners yesterday.
There you go.
There you go.
We've got to keep it going all summer.
Yeah. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I could answer several questions.
You've already, I'm going to let you.
He's already sworn in.
I know. You're already sworn in, and you're bigger than me, so I'll let you speak.
I appreciate that.
The thing that I've heard so far from who's for this, including the staff, is everybody's saying eventually, 2030 coming up. So, I think my first neighbor who spoke first said it very nicely. He's got a couple of options, you know, rezone for the three acres or do the five acres, but right now, the way it's set up is just, it's dangerous. And unless you go out there and drive up and down the road, you guys, you know, I guess you're not going to see it unless you go physically experience it. But we do it every single day.
Yeah.
That's, I just wanted to add that piece in, and I'm sure you guys heard as well what I heard, everybody spoke.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? We've got it. Seeing anyone else, we will close the public hearing. Ask the applicant to come back. Okay. To remind you, you're still sworn in. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for staff. The water runoff, when we do these developments, they're not supposed to have water runoff under other property when they do the preliminary plat. Is that not correct?
For subdivisions with three acres or larger, the county's stormwater standards do not require stormwater detention.
Right.
So, if these are three acres or larger, it won't have, it would not have to have a detention basin, for instance. It would have to have what's called water quality control. So, for instance, the developer would get credits for leaving forest land and vegetation along the lower parts of the property where the water would flow through, and that would help, certainly help absorb water, but there's no detention basins required for three acre lots or larger.
Yeah, but we're not going to allow them just to put a slope on the property and drain it onto someone else's property, the water, from that development.
There are definitely water quality standards, and those do impact things like the... There are definitely water quality standards, and those do impact things like the rate of flow of water.
Standards we passed about a year ago.
Right.
Yeah, the county passed, county council passed about a year ago.
I'm just trying to give you, you know, kind of what they do in these, just the one, we just let you do whatever you want on the property once we change its owner.
So you were wanting to answer a question?
Well, and I can speak to a lot of this, so there's only going to be 17 lots, and that was going from 14 to 17, because the way the land lays, some of these lots are already four and a half, four, 4.75 acres, because we're not clearing any trees, we're not changing the way the water runs, these are three-acre lots with a road, there's not going to be any kind of clear cutting, you know what I mean? We're basically just running a road on the hilltops and letting it lay as it lies. So we're not asking for a lot when we do this, and I understand the traffic issues of 61, but this, this is, it's surrounded by three-acre lots, and this is pretty much the last developable piece on Ferris County Road. So this, at the end of Ferris County Road, so this will be it.
Any questions for the applicant?
I got a question of staff. You know, Robert, you mentioned the plans, and of course, they've been presented to the county, county council about the service roads going down both sides of Highway 61. Is there a timetable? You know, again, I remember talking about this being presented to us. Mr. Dinoff mentioned that we now have some money coming in, but is there a timetable?
Well, we asked the same question when this application came in, we contacted the county road board, they contacted the MoDOT. You may remember that this was about a year ago, year and a half ago, there was a property that was proposed to rezone to commercial on the opposite side of Highway 61. They wanted to go to, from ag to commercial, would put in a self-storage facility, and it turns out that the plans for the widening of Highway 61 would take about half of their entire parcel. And the county council ended up denying that rezoning application and the conditional use permit for that, for that parcel. So to get back to your question, the answer is, MoDOT does not have funding programmed right now for the widening of Highway 61. It's, the plan which was updated last time in 2019, showing the service roads, that's still the plan and is still active. Most recently, St. Charles County has actually been advancing funds to make improvements to Highway 61. For instance, the Piney Road overpass, St. Charles County got the ball rolling on that by providing the advanced funding for that. So that's how that happened within the last, I don't know, what was it, last three years? I'm not sure when that happened exactly. So everyone I've talked to at the county realizes that Highway 61, the safety is concerned. These, these crossings, these at-grade crossings are definitely hazardous. I mean, anyone who's driven down Highway 61, you can see that those crossings are hazardous, there's no question about that. So it is a priority, funding has been coming to make improvements, but there's not specific, a specific timetable, for instance, in the next two to three years or whatever, for this improvement and for the North Service Road. I guess that's the short answer.
From my understanding, Robert, these things then are, after they're applied to MoDOT, MoDOT has to go in front of the east-west gateway to get funding, and the funding is done on priority basis around the entire area, then funds are allocated, then there's a bid process and engineering and things like that. I mean, I don't see that this, not that it won't happen, I do believe it will happen, but you're probably talking at least five years at least, I'll bet.
Yeah.
Minimum.
Yeah, that could be, yeah.
I mean, that's how the process works.
It took, the Piney Road overpass, in my thinking, was expedited, and it did take several years to happen, but it took some, some arm twisting, too, to get everything in place, the county had to pay for those, make the, advance the funds to MoDOT and things like that.
And the municipalities had to forego their funding for X number of years for that to happen, too.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So there's a lot of things involved.
So Darrell, I mean, with all this being said, I mean, if I'm going to buy a house, I'm not going to buy it in that subdivision. If I'm a, you think there's even a market for it?
I do.
I don't care if it's five acres or three.
I live just the next exit down, so I cross 61 all the time, and there's no ground left in St. Charles County on three acres wooded lots. People want their dream home on property, I believe. I think there's a market there for that.
I, I mean, I can't say for sure, but I'm, I've driven down that road enough times to know that it's pretty, it's pretty hairy.
And like you said, within 10 years...
You're taking a risk, and I understand that.
Yeah, 10 years, maybe the overpass comes through there, it may take 10 years for these houses to be built and sold. I mean, it's not like they're going to sell overnight lots.
And we're not here to judge on your risk tolerance or anything, but I'm just curious what your thinking is.
I think, from my research on three-acre lots, wooded lots, they sell in St. Charles County. There's not many left in St. Charles County. People want to stay in St. Charles County, Wentzville School District, you know.
Okay.
So that's what the new school across the street, you know, is close.
Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We will now bring RZ 22-11 back to the commission for consideration. Are there any additional questions from staff? Ms. Barr, do you have any questions?
Okay, first of all, if this applicant doesn't come before us, this is already zoned for five-acre lots. Okay, so they, they build 10 to 12 homes, now they're asking for three, they're 17. So there's, it's a difference of five houses, okay? Nice houses, because everybody's going to have at least two cars, maybe three, so we're talking about 15, 15 cars at the very most difference between them asking for three acres or just keeping it five. I know that Highway 61 is extremely dangerous, okay? I don't think that adding, you know, 12 to 15 cars is going to make it any less dangerous or considerably more dangerous. I think it's going to be what it is, irregardless of this is three-acre lots or five-acre lots. I think that the amount of traffic is going to be not a whole lot of difference. I really don't believe there's going to be a whole lot of difference in the traffic. There's going to be some more cars, but again, I don't think Highway 61 is going to become more or less dangerous with the addition, with the addition of five lots, is what I'm saying.
I think there's multiple issues here. I agree with you, it's not a lot of difference in traffic, but I think when you look at what is motivating development at its highest and best use. And highest and best use, marginal argument whether three or five is the highest and best, but the long-term planning shows this as a one to four acre, or one to four lots. When that, when that interchange gets in and the road gets in, now that is an underdeveloped piece of ground, because highest and best use, based on the 2030 plan, would indicate that a higher density, in fact, would be called for, and so in fact, this would be an underdevelopment of the ground. So I don't think it's not always a matter of adding more or whatever, I think it's looking at the highest and best use, supply and demand, and all the other factors that to add in, from my perspective.
Any other comments, questions for staff? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve application RZ 22-11.
Motion to approve.
There has been a motion by Mr. Hollander, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Cornwell makes the second. Ms. Barr, how do you vote?
Yes.
She votes yes. Mr. Clary?
No.
Mr. Cornwell?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Schell?
No.
Mr. Hollander?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Application passes six to two. Okay, thank you. Now, this will be on the county council's agenda on Monday, July 11th, right back in this room.
Without air conditioning. Without air conditioning.
We have no plats to approve, we have no continued items. Next on the agenda is the approval of the May 18th, 2022 regular meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes from the May 18th, 2022 regular meeting, all in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Planning and zoning division updates, Robert, you have some introductions.
Sure. Quickly, I wanted to introduce you to two new planners on our staff, Jared Young and Douglas Mosley. Jared comes to us most recently from the Illinois Department of Transportation, and worked on, and has kind of an expertise in contracts and procurement, so we're looking forward to using some of those skills, and our grants management especially. Douglas, most recently worked for City of St. Louis, but also for Rock Island County, Illinois. He's a certified floodplain manager, in fact was the floodplain manager of the year in Illinois in 2017, but has a lot of expertise in working for two, actually two counties in Illinois, Madison County and Rock Island County, Illinois. So I wanted to introduce both of them, and you may see them at some of the future planning commission meetings.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thanks for coming to work for the county. Why, why? Why are you here?
I enjoy driving on 270.
You like to drive?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Any other updates?
I just wondered if any of you had any updates.
Well, unfortunately, I have to announce that this will be Mr. Jackson's last in-person meeting, as his job is taking him away to North Carolina.
Good luck.
We want to thank you for all your service for these two years, and this, the length of tonight's meeting makes up for your very first meeting.
Coming home at 1:00 in the morning probably wasn't ideal.
Best of luck to you and your family, you're moved.
Good luck, Mike.
Anything else? Saying nothing, is a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Best of luck to you, it's really been nice getting to know you.
New spot?